Okay, welcome everyone to our August seventh meeting, our evening meeting. And you know, I'd like to first start off by saying the town of Elton, Ms. Joanne Clark passed away. If anyone knew Joanne Clark, she was known as the mayor of North Street. Uh, Joanne would come to our town meetings and, and really bring a lot to the table when she came and I think that anyone that knew her, uh, knew that, that she had, uh, her heart was very big for the town of Elton and we're gonna miss her dearly and just wanted to get that on the record. Okay, do we have any approval of the minutes of July seventeenth?
So.
A motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. Do we have a approval for a financial report? Got a motion?
A second.
And a second, any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and uh, Tameka, I think that you said that you're getting real close on having all, I know we had some hiccups with the admin system.
Yes.
But we're close?
Yeah, well, we, we're I would say we are close. Just a few two things we gotta get done.
Very good. So, Tameka showed me the program and I can promise you, once it's done and once it's complete, everyone's gonna love what they're gonna see. It's gonna be a, a beautiful printout, everything's gonna show how it's allocated out and make it very easy to read and a lot of different charts. So it's something that we've never, uh, we've quite frankly, we've never had, but one of the hiccups that we had is there was a lot of information that wasn't put in from fiscal twenty-three into
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for the offer report also.
Oh, you're welcome.
Fantastic.
Very good. Okay, uh, we have a petition for annexation, uh, presented for approval is, uh, who's gonna, is Jean Minter, are you gonna read that in or Louis, you reading it in or what?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind.
I think we actually have representatives at company here.
Okay, come on down.
The owner is, uh, twenty-nine-hundred Lock Raven LLC at an
So we have, I guess I can read it here, uh, firm name brief, authorized member of twenty-nine-hundred Lock Raven LLC, owner of the property located in the third election district, Cecil County, Maryland, and identified on Cecil Tax Map. Oh, thirty-three seat parcel, oh, oh, six-oh, consisting of approximately one point three-one acres with improvements erected thereon to be addressed as seven-oh-one East Pulaski Highway and further described as Cecil County Land Director Bieber, twenty-one, twenty, Folio, one-thirty-five, and I believe that this is, uh, the, we call it the Olden Bower Building? All right, very good. Glad to have an opportunity to get this in. Tell us what we got.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, for the record, Bradley R. Stover, one-twenty-four North Main Street, now with the firm of Robinson Stover, uh, one-twenty-four North Main Street, Bel Air, I guess I should get my right.
There you go.
Uh, I'd represent the applicant, uh, Mr. Greve is here this evening, he's behind me, uh, to answer any questions if necessary. I have next to me the contract purchase for the subject property, Anthony McGuire. This property is, as you pointed out, what we all know is the old Yodobauer's Furniture Store. Uh, it is a commercial property that, uh, Mr. Greve owns and he wishes to sell to Mr. McGuire. Mr. McGuire intends to continue it as commercial use. Uh, the reason we're seeking annexation is, well, number one, it is contiguous to the limits of this fine town of Elton. It currently receives water service from the town. We are seeking annexation to, uh, have the privilege and opportunity to access the town sewer system. It's currently certified septic, not in the greatest of shape, and certainly better for property owner and adjacent property owners to have functioning septic. Uh, we have a petition for annexation that you have before you. We understand this is really just introductory at this point. Uh, we understand there will be a planning commission hearing and advertised hearing for that and also a comeback before you folks for a public hearing. At that point, we will be ready, willing and able to, uh, satisfy the provisions of both state law and the town's laws respect the annexation as it relates to adequate public facilities and the other requirements of both the state and the town law. Uh, we are seeking C-two highway commercial zoning under the town's code, which we believe is consistent with the area. And again, the use is not really intended to change, uh, it's commercial, we just need to get that sewer to improve the situation on the ground. Um, so with that, unless Mr. McGuire has anything to add, we would open up to any questions about the petition. We can understanding, we need to come back and be, uh, ready for the public hearing and be able to address any citizen concerns or comments at that time.
Well, listen, uh, there's the, there's not many questions, uh, no questions for me. I'm, I'm extremely happy that it'll finally, uh, take an enclave and have it in the town of Elton. I knew that we were struggling, uh, never had sewer on that site and, uh, I'm excited for you. Uh, Jean, you have any questions, comments or more?
No.
Did you say?
No, are you on the agenda for this one?
No, I believe.
No, September ninth.
So it complates it as used, tar place and all that stuff. It's still the same, it's not gonna be used? Different? The people that were in there at our services and all that stuff.
No, they will, that is not the intent. My understanding is, uh, one of the conditions of annexation will be they need to leave the property because, you know, tire service is not permitted in the C-two.
Yeah, but I heard you say that.
Let me clarify, the intent is to continue it as a commercial use, with your respect with the respect to the tenant, the current tenant, that tenant has been given notice to leave. Mr. McGuire would continue it as a commercial use. Thank you for the
Perfect. John, Louis, any questions?
I would say we would welcome them and welcome business community.
Very good.
As an asset to our, our town.
Certainly, it would provide additional tax base and that's
I love it. I love it. Thank you.
Well, hope it stays easy next.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve annexation resolution A-one, twenty-twenty-four presented for introduction? So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion on the introduction? Lou, did you have a comment?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Fine.
Uh, hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
You have been introduced.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I apologize for interrupting. Could you also vote on the approval for accepting the petition for the annexation?
Okay, uh, do we have a motion to approve the introduction, uh, enters, uh, let's see.
Your presentation?
A presentation as Michelle stated, do we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second, any discussion on that? Hearing done, all in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the
Thank you. Glad to have you. Hopefully, everything goes well. Okay, Lou?
The Resolution R-six, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, this amends the town's charter that, uh, I'll read specifically from, uh, the, uh, section one elections, uh, two-seven-three. The D is the added paragraph and it states, "The Board of Supervisors of Elections shall counsel, cancel the election and certify a candidate to be duly elected in the event that a lawfully registered incumbent count and candidate for mayor or commissioner is running for office unopposed. The Board of Supervisors of Elections shall give ample public notice of such cancellation." This, uh, obviously is a issue, not an issue, but, uh, to address the fact that we had recently had two commissioners have been, uh, run unopposed and rather than have an election in a case like that, uh, the Board of Supervisor of Elections can certify that their, uh, uh, you know, incumbent candidates can be served another term for years.
I, I think it's a, a, a good resolution and I think that, uh, we budget for the elections several thousand dollars and if, uh, if anyone doesn't put their name in, I think it's, is it sixty days?
Yes.
Sixty days prior, so this works out well because everyone, multiple years decide whether they wanna run for election and it gives them, uh, sixty days prior to, so I feel very comfortable. This is a great resolution and, uh, we shouldn't have any hiccups here. We have a motion to approve Resolution R-six dash twenty-twenty-four. A motion in a second, any discussion?
Is this the first time?
No, this happened, this, this has happened many times that no one's running against the elected. Yep. I know.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. There you go. There'll be election in another year and a half, though, I can assure you that.
Can't find the resolution for the property. Standby, I got it.
Okay.
Resolution R-seven, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the town of Elton or the mayor and commissioners as their governing body are declaring two-nineteen North Street a surplus property. In accordance with the charter, you have to make a declaration of surplus property in order for the town administrator to proceed with the sale of that property. I would recommend that, uh, Resolution R-seven, two thousand twenty-four be enacted by the mayor and commissioner so we can proceed with the sale of that property.
We have a motion to approve Resolution R-seven dash twenty-twenty-four. So moved. And a motion in a second, any discussion on the disposal of the surplus property? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The last item I have is a contract contract with the Mint Magnolia Cleaning and Organizing Services LLC. Uh, this is for a temporary, uh, contractor to actually clean the Elton Municipal Building in the absence of, uh, Mr. Young. Uh, hopefully he'll be back, uh, before too long, but we need uh, temporary, uh, contractor to do the cleaning. So we would recommend to the mayor and commissioners to accept a, uh, contract with Mint Magnolia Cleaning Organizing Services LLC for a temporary contract to clean the Elton Municipal Building.
Very good. We have a motion to, uh, enter into a agreement if necessary, a temporary agreement with Mint Magnolia Cleaning and organizational, organization, organizing services.
That's the name.
We have a motion, so moved. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Soon as Mr. Young recovers, then he'll be back uh, to work, so.
What do you want?
Thank you. Tomorrow.
We will have you back.
Uh, the only other thing I, it's not on the agenda, but just as a quickie, I sent an email to the board. I met with KCI today about the, uh, Partigian Elton, Route forty interconnection. I had some, uh, questions about, uh, the electrical components and the service requirements for that, um, control vault. And theoretically, uh, they, they can resolve those issues and then get back to me. And then we can, uh, put that project out to bid and I'll be able to nail down a price on it. Probably probably be pretty expensive, but, uh, I'll get a, a probable, I mean, a probable estimate of, of, uh, construction from the engineer. I think we're gonna use ARCA money for that project. Anyway, that's, uh, that's that one.
Lou, I can tell you, I know you've been very busy.
Yeah, real busy.
Okay, I have one thing on the agenda. I know we have, I think we have some folks here from Button Woods tonight. Very good, so I'll, I'll save my, uh, comments for that. Uh, but first, we need to fill a spot on the planning commission and everyone should have received, uh, Mr. Tom Jones's resume and his information. So uh, I'd like to ask for a motion to accept Mr. Tom Jones of four-twenty-three Patriots Way to be our newest member on the planning commission and it would expire March twenty March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. Hold on a second, in a second, any discussion on Mr. Tom Jones? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, Mr. Jones is our newest member. Glad to have a full board. Okay. I am going to, uh, not have anything else to say. Uh, Jean, do you have anything to, to night?
Well, Charles off the building next door, because now we did surplus, so I'll wait find out if we're moving on them. Um, Chief, I'm not gonna steal your thunder, because I I know you were probably gonna talk about last night, that night out. Um, the only thing I wanted to say besides being so well organized, um, that's probably the most cars I've seen in no car since the bar. Phenomenal, the turnout, unbelievable.
It's been great the last couple of years. We have a lot of the vendors that show up. They're all service providers, not being charged of anyone. We had hogs for years come out and they actually serve the hot, cook and serve the hot dogs and stuff this year. So that allowed for the officers to actually co-mingle with the, uh, community and interact a little more, so that was fantastic. We, uh, we didn't have any hiccups that I can think of, um. We, uh, I, I can't say credit for this, though. There was a full committee that did this and, uh, I can say that um, Anthony Devine was, uh, one of the ones at the head of that committee. He and um, Angelo Joffe's with Protect and Tracy was on the committee. I'm not even sure everyone took us on it, but there was a lot of work and a lot of people that, you know, everything was donated, um. We have a very small budget that we use for that, but, uh, probably had about twenty-two of our own officers that were there and all of our here, so.
It was fantastic. Everybody did a wonderful job.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I knew you had a lot of people you wanted to.
Thank you.
I have to take full credit for the weather. To postpone the rain.
There were a lot.
It felt like rain, though.
Yeah.
But everybody seemed to not mind.
Yeah.
When I talked to, uh, officer, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
When I talked to officer, uh, Andy, uh, he said they got everything packed up and he took the trailer to the armory and as soon as he, he got done, right before he got in his car, started to rain. So it got through the whole, whole thing. So it worked out really well.
It turned out good, thank you. Um, talking about hot dogs. Alicia, are you having, is the event going on or did you call it?
Friday night.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna call it in the morning, but unless something significant happens overnight, then you will cancel.
You're gonna wait? Um, one thing I've noticed could be, especially I've been seeing all the kids there last night, when you have these events, yeah. There seems to be a lot of children. But I've never seen a hot dog vendor. Is, is there a reason? Or do you know, is it no one's?
I have heard through the grid line that many years ago, there was a hot dog vendor, like, almost like a push cart. I don't know if we would have been wrong.
Yeah, it was a woman named Donna.
Yeah.
Used to be one up at the corner.
Okay.
Every day.
Um, I don't know how long ago that stopped. I know that there was one I wanted that, that somebody was out there selling hot dogs, but that has been maybe the only ones that I'm aware of.
Have you ever thought of joining as a fundraiser for the alliance?
I did just now and you said it.
Well, I know there's always a lot of kids there and I will tell you, um, with my grandchildren, um, that, that, that's their preference. But it's hard to feed them if, you know, if it's limited for children. But, um, whether you like hot dogs or not, I don't know.
Are there permitting issues? Louis? Joe, anybody?
If, if the alliance wanted to be, do that as a fundraiser?
Um, typically just a transient vendor permit, but when, um, we don't even use, we don't even go through that process for Fall Fest vendors. We expect that you would go through your own vetting process and so forth, so.
So for any other event, though? We did like the alliance day Friday night, we were having that.
Yeah.
I don't think there's an issue with that.
Okay.
I don't, I can't see why there would be, but it's, again, if something happens, that's an alliance event.
Right, yeah, go through the health department.
Yeah, we, because all of our vendors for any of our events have to go through that permit process. And they can get one-day event approval or like a full year, like a lot of people that are, um, represented throughout the county for different events, they'll get a full-year permit. So, yeah, but other than that.
Well, just Um, the other thing, speaking of the alliance, um, there was an issue I heard uh, with someone trying to get into the building. And then when I inquired, um, about the building, um, Alicia did tell me that some of the doors are in bad need of repair. Um, I think there, how many doors are there? Are there five?
Uh, there's, I mean, Sam came down and looked around the other day and, uh, we five.
But how many need immediate exemption?
Well, many of them have holes or you can see through. I know JPW replaced my door in the back with a field door, um, it was one of the worst ones and they replaced that earlier this year.
You have phenomenal. You have to store the pole room?
Oh, yeah. And we have scum living on the table right now, we choose to chew through the door.
Or can we, is that how we can move on?
Yeah, we're, I'm looking through it now, so. We got the approval, you know, because we start a home, we make sure we're covered, but we can replace one at similar tech or at similar tech or stuff.
Yeah, whatever. Whatever, um, I guess it takes, especially if there's three that are very bad and then to secure with decent locks that somebody can't, you know, get into the building. I appreciate that. Um, Dan, the only thing I have for you, at the last meeting, we were talking about potholes. And the cost to repair them. Of us doing it, buying the equipment versus you know, subcontracting that out. Have you come up with any information yet on that? Any numbers on what we have spent to date, like contracting versus the cost of equipment?
Uh, what we've done so far is that we've actually just rented the equipment. I thought
I, I know.
About the rentals. So, all we're doing for the next couple of months, we, we've got probably like, like a two-month rental, one a roller and also one a grinder. Just a, just do everything in half, doing that.
Can you give, can you give us the numbers on that, on the rental versus the purchase?
Oh, yeah, I think I, I thought, I thought I gave previously, if not, I'll give, I'll give it to the board, I'll give it to the guys.
You might have, and if you did, I apologize, but Louis, you said something about it coming out of highway user funds.
Yeah, you can, you can rent equipment and use highway user as a fund. Highway, but you can't now. Are you checked with the state highway finance people? You can't buy it with those funds, only rent it.
But can you purchase anything with that money?
Yeah, you can purchase a contract to fix any roads, which includes material and everything.
You purchase like, um, like CR-six, we do, you know, the, you know, some basis that goes against that account, the roads will do that, you know. We, we don't imagine stuff like that.
It just
Cold patch, we'll buy cold patch for the same, um, anything.
Yeah, we buy a lot of materials with that.
You can buy that.
Yeah.
I just thought, I didn't realize you couldn't, we couldn't purchase that because whether it's highway user funds or what, wherever that money is coming from, it's not ours. Why would we continue to throw away on rentals versus purchasing the equipment?
Oh, it's
And I still feel that way.
It depends on the timing, the quantity. If we do, if it's you know, if it's, if it's, if we can't do anything in-house, that's, we, we've made, we've made the judgment. If it's something that, you know, if the rail's too high and nothing I can use with it, then it makes either make sense to rent or make sense to buy. It depends on what, what's the situation, that's case by case. Like the example is we'll dredge, you know, sometimes we'll do dredging at the, um, we need a park and we're gonna get the permit, but that's a story. But, you know, that's a sixty-foot long stick. And, you know, we actually brought that equipment for maybe a week. That's all we have, that's all we need, you know, for the year, it's fine that way.
I understand.
Or it's the other way around. We do evaluate case by case, if it makes sense to buy, we do buy.
I understand that for like something like that, but on, on roads that are constantly being you know, in disrepair, from weather or whatever, age, whatever. Um, it just seems to make more sense to me that we own the equipment that we could do it rather than contract it out, but it's hard to tell without the numbers.
Of the
So, maybe we can, uh, work on that. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jean. While, while we're talking about the highway user revenue, which is a restricted fund and, uh, the way that that works is that the, uh, we get X amount of dollars from taxes, uh, speeding tickets and a little bit everything, but it does have to be used strictly for paving of our roads in, in our town. So I wanted to, uh, have you take a look at Washington Woods maybe and, and kind of get it on the schedule at some point. Not this year, but maybe in the, in the years future, maybe we can see if we can, uh, uh, get Washington Woods neighborhood done. Earl, you have anything?
I used to have one time at, Chief, I heard you had a loaded, uh, event last night. For the record, I'm gonna apologize, I was not there, I missed the biggest event of the, uh, the, the
We missed you.
I thought, and I'm saying this, I thought you guys had it DJ. I usually do it and I apologize personally to the police department and to the town because I would have been right there with people. I, I apologize. That's why I'm just saying, Earl, they didn't want you. I know. No, I thought everything was
So they were trying to
They would have called said, "Don't forget tomorrow."
Yeah, I know they tried to reach you. That's what I heard. Otherwise, I'd have said something to you Friday when I saw you at the ribbon cutting. I'm sorry, I apologize.
I apologize, though. I just want them to know that I didn't do that wrong. Okay, that's it?
Robert?
I have to issue the same apology. I was with Earl.
Wait a second, I was with Earl.
Well, I can say Earl's family was there and that was a pleasure.
I had the same questions for Dan that Jean did, uh, and I really would like to see some numbers on that.
I'll send them again.
Thank you. And that's all.
Very good. Chief, did you have anything you want to add?
No. Thank you.
All right, very good. Uh, I know the hot topic tonight is the, I, I know a lot of folks from Button Woods and, and we'll have you come up and sign in and, uh, uh, put your address in there and give your comments. But I made a commitment, uh, at the last meeting that, uh, I was gonna get involved in the Button Woods project, the parking. And it's not an easy task, as everyone knows, it's been going on since nineteen ninety, uh, when, when the development was built out there, but a couple of things that we are doing uh, immediately after the last meeting, uh, uh, was working with, uh, our town administrator, Lou George. We reached out to the uh, owner of the land known as Southfields, which butts the, uh, Button Woods neighborhood. And I was seeing if there was a way that we could extend some parking lots or additional parking to the rear of that. There's some challenges with that. I would not rule that out, but there is, uh, a few challenges that we have ourselves. Uh, Louis, uh, went through and actually produced to me some drawings to create some more parking within the neighborhood itself. And that might be a viable option for us also. Uh, you know, but as we're here talking about how many creating more spaces, uh, it still comes down to everyone wants to park in front of their house. Right? I mean, ever, as close to your house as you can. So the last thing that we did is we had Michelle, she pulled the, the actual, uh, covenants, conditions and restrictions of the Buttonwood community. And I just wanted to read to the record about the parking rights. Whether we had a homeowners association or no homeowners association, here's exactly what it says. Ownership of each lot shall entitle the owner or owners thereof to use the use of not more than two automobile parking spots. Which shall be as near and convenient to said lot as reasonably possible. Together with the right of ingress and ingress and then said, and then said parking, uh, area. So we're gonna try our best when we put together some of this, because not everyone's gonna have two spots right in front of their house. It's, it's gonna be physically impossible in a lot of the ways that we're looking at this. The second thing that we have is I have a meeting scheduled with Aspen Management Group, who's a homeowners association group, who, who is an expert at this. The town of Elton is truly, we're not experts at trying to create this and we've done this at, uh, I think, uh, Turquist also. And we're not very good at it. I'm gonna just tell you, we're not very good at trying to manage, uh, it's not our role in a lot of cases, but we're Uh it's not our role in a lot of cases, but we're trying, we're gonna try. And as I said, our ongoing commitment is I'm gonna meet with uh Aspen management and ask them. How they see it, how, how can they help us? What can they put together to, to make sense? Because that's what they do for a living. They'll get, give me that input. They're gonna give me that input and then I wanna provide it back to the Bud Woods community. But I know as the heat goes up, we just gotta be uh as, as calm as we can, the best that we can. I know it's very difficult. So that's my comments, but whoever wants to come down and say something, you wanna say something?
I said I wasn't gonna say nothing, but yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead.
First of all, I asked Chip, is Chip here or in?
Yes.
Online. A code enforcer, first of all, to address some of the misconception of uh what's going on at Bud Wood. And whatever comments you guys have, still say it, but the, the code enforcer, um I've been in this place almost a week. Doing crazy stuff and I talked to him personally. I said I wasn't gonna say nothing, but that's not me not to say nothing. First of all, last meeting, there was comments made. I didn't respond to it because didn't have facts. I'm the commissioner that I guess apparently one of the uh uh people that live out there is, is related to. The comment that was said was mistwisted because I never said nothing about nobody owned any parking spaces or giving anybody free parking space. But the code enforcer will explain my words in the way that I said it because. The town owns the property from the sidewalk to the parking lot, from that part. You uh the owners, owners own from the house to the sidewalk and he'll explain that. Chip, you on?
Yes, I am. Um yeah, the, the uh townhouse is owned to the. Uh outside of the sidewalk and beyond that is town property. So they're public parking spaces. The, I believe DPW has numbered them as best as they can. To give everyone at least one space in front of their house uh and another space remotely. But uh the parking spaces do not belong to the properties uh that they are in front of. They belong, they're town property.
So based on, stay on it, Chip. Based on what everyone's talking about the deed from years ago. And then they, there's uh the new people that are coming in, don't have any understanding about the deeds. What really had me really step into this, if a person comes from out of town, just hypothetically. Delaware or someplace, don't know anything about someone's deed or their parking spaces. They park in there and they get in an argument with somebody because they don't know they didn't park in somebody's spot. My point is, and I, again, I'm not taking up just because I have a family member out there. My point is to treat everybody. The, the same way. You call this whether you're related to me or not. So I just felt bad because I didn't open my mouth and say, hey, this is wrong, because I didn't want to get into arguments of mine. But anybody knows me, I'm straightforward and I come straight and try to help you any way I can. So I apologize if you look at it the wrong way. But we're here to help the town to resolve a problem. And what he's doing right now, when I say he, the mayor, he's trying to bring in a development. I'm not developing, I, I property management, people, people to try to um take the place of a homeowners association. And try to help provide us some extra space or do something to help you guys. So don't think we're not trying to work and help you guys. So um I, I let you talk, Chip, on anything else you have to say.
I, I mean, that's about it. Um I think mostly it's, it's been a problem with people who don't get along out there. And don't understand that they do not own the parking space in front of their properties and. Uh if, if they're new and, and didn't receive uh the declaration. About this issue, maybe we need to send it out again. I don't know.
One last comment. Are you sure? Yes, I am. I'm, I mean, I'm just like the homeowners out there. I'm a little hot about them not having a parking space and then we not being able to provide it for them. But the police officers cannot. Tow a car, they cannot have a person move because they have no jurisdiction over anybody's parking. Am I right, Jean?
Yes, in regards to the fact that even if they're numbered to that house, anybody can park there. And I don't know, I don't know where the people live. I don't know which car belongs to which house, like the officers out there on scene don't know any of that, so.
And, and so I said, and then now, if you got your chance, state, state your piece. I want to let y'all know it, it ain't. We're covering up for anybody. It's just that nobody knows what to do right now, but we're trying to work on it. I, I promise.
Now.
Anything else?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna support you because I'll be quiet, but I have a, a, a family member who was there too. And I've heard of problems. Um so you're not alone. You're not alone.
Very good. Well, come on down. Come on down and sign up there and give us your address. Thank you.
Hi. Tina Getty, two eleven Bud Wood Road.
Thank you, Tina.
Now, I understand what you're saying about the deed and years ago. Honestly, I don't know nothing about years ago when it first opened. The issue that we had last month was the numbered spots. Last month, everybody made it sound like, okay, if it's your number, your house number. Nobody else should park there. Everybody should respect everybody else and you park in your own parking spot. And the OF is for overflow. So that's what I'm going by. That's the understanding I had last month. And I also mentioned that I have to put cones on my two eleven to save my parking spot. So I'll have a place to park. The OF is not my issue. I don't care if I have to park in front of my house and one over across the way. I'm not worried about that. My only concern is people parking in my parking spot for two eleven. Now, I was under the impression that the numbers meant something last week.
And, and I would agree with you.
And the residents, the other residents should have respect and common courtesy for your numbered spot. Well, that's not happening. And I, we put the cones there to save our parking spot. Me and a neighbor, we each have a cone in our spot. Well, somebody stole one cone. So we had to get another cone. And then there was an incident where a cone was being removed. But that was from, that wasn't with me, it was with another neighbor, so I'm not gonna get into that because that had nothing to do with me. But the, the thing is, even with the cones being there, we're wanting everybody to have respect for the other residents. And that's not happening. That's my thing. The overflow parking, there is an issue. But I would like to have my two eleven parking spot. I understand that the cops can't do anything because we have no permits. There's no way of knowing who, you know, who has that parking spot or whatever. But like I mentioned before, until we can figure out something, I would like to have some kind of permits or something saying we can park in it. The numbered spots is what really got me up for is the numbered spots.
And we created that. We created the, the, the numbered spot and, and we would hope that someone wouldn't park in your numbered spot other than you.
If you was to have no numbers, I'm guarantee you, that's gonna cause even more issue. Because then you're gonna have more people parking. And then, and then the ones that actually live there, they're gonna do. Because you got such an overflow of everybody parking it, everybody's numbered. And if everybody would just park in their own number, in their own lane and use the overflow for overflow, we wouldn't have this issue. But I don't wanna have to keep putting a cone in my spot, worry about putting it down, taking it. Pain in the ass, to be honest. But that's my only concern.
We don't want you to put a cone on, on the property. I mean, it's, 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 it's uh, we don't want you to do that.
See, I don't wanna do it either. I don't wanna do it either, but I wanna make sure I got a parking spot because.
I do.
The residents have no respect for your, your spot. That is the biggest thing, is not having no respect for the numbered spots.
It, well, it's what it comes down to, but bear with us, I'm gonna tell you, I, I'm on this, it's, I know it's been one month since the last time we spoke. We've got the meetings in place, we've got the research, but the way that I'm gonna see how I see this thing coming together. There will be numbered spots for every resident and it'll be.
That's, there is numbered spots for every residence. There is numbered spots, but it's just that. Families have, we have big families, we have, I myself had three vehicles in my family. So we have the two spots and we always park our other one in an overflow. We don't park our third car in. Another numbered parking spot. We park it in an OF and we don't have an OF and we go around the corner and park, you know. In another spot. But I understand that everybody has more cars and all that. But my thing is, just have respect for, it's a double edged sword because we come here and I get the impression that. The numbered spots mean something, but then when I go home, all my, my other neighbors and stuff don't know that. They have no idea of that. We're not all on the same page.
And there's, and there's a, and, and part of it is, is that, you know, you have a lot of rentals. And landlords probably aren't doing a great job of relaying the message to the tenants. And uh, uh and we're probably not doing a good job to relying or relaying that to the.
That was sent out was misread also. People are taking that the wrong way too because. Like somebody had mentioned, it says you get two parking spots in front of your home. Well, some of these cars are parking in front of their home. It's not their numbers, but they're parking in front of their home. And that's where people are getting. Misread.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
At the end of the day. When your neighborhood had a strong homeowners association.
Honey, I wasn't there.
They stole from the home.
Okay, let me, let me just finish what I'm saying, please. There was a time that there was a strong homeowners association in that neighborhood.
Okay.
They enforced the parking, that's the document that's in front of mayor. And that document was recorded with the land records. That document was something that gave them the standing. To be able to enforce parking, et cetera, if I'm misstating, please tell me. But at the end of the day. If, with all due respect, I think the thing to do is if you all get a homeowners association and pay them. Then you'll be able to enforce the declarations associated with your neighborhood.
I'm, I thought about that. But to be honest, I'm kinda scared and weary of a homeowners association. So I'm afraid they're gonna start telling me what I kinda can't do.
Well, that's exactly it. If they're telling you there, then you can park where you can.
Would help with the parking, but I've never had a homeowners association, so, but up here. Those stories are all different.
They are all different, but bear with me and I'm gonna report. Uh I'm gonna have all that information for the team. And, and in fact, we'll probably, after I meet with you, we're gonna have uh, we'll have here to meet with uh, in a town meeting. And that'll be soon.
And um you mentioned potholes. We got one in our road in our circle.
Stating care of, Dan's got it taken care of.
Do you know another one I know, just down at the red light by um Burger King? Uh two thirteen and forty, right there. There's a big old pothole right there.
That's a state highway. We got that and report it right now. See how quickly it is?
Oh, you guys.
They don't like us to touch your roof. And dangerous.
What, you guys aren't gonna do the side road or something?
We do the town.
Two thirteen is considered a state road. Route forty is a state road. Waveall Road is considered a county road. Delaware Avenue is a, is a uh state road.
Delaware Avenue is a state road?
Well, thank you, Tina.
Alright.
I, I hear you loud and clear. We hear you.
We just feel for you because like I said, we both have. We have relatives that live there and.
That's a tough spot here right now. I see what's going on.
The meetings and I'm getting one thing and if they don't come to the meetings, they're not getting the same thing I'm getting. And everybody's getting different readings from.
That's why we want, want you guys to listen in the ear what's going on.
Mrs. Tina did ask a question that I don't believe was answered. I'm curious myself, how do you go about setting up an HOA? I don't know that answer. We're gonna have to have someone in here to talk to us about it, but uh he'll be here. We're gonna have him here.
But, but one thing that was mentioned, that again, the um code enforcer, the cones that you're putting down. There's nothing, no sign saying do not park in my spot, there's cone there. There's nothing that's enforcing your cone. That even though I don't understand what you're saying. So if everybody, if everybody, everybody put a cone out there, then we have even more problems. I'm just using it, I'm just saying to you, ma'am.
But if it was, they put it down there numbers, I wouldn't.
Yeah, but it's not there.
I see, I see what you're saying.
I just don't sound like a negative.
Like courtesy, and the only way that we always relied on that was people having respect for each other. And you said that more than once. Nobody has respect hardly anymore. That's the biggest problem. But if this homeowners thing doesn't uh. Hand out to anything, I personally would be totally in favor of going to the permit process. And settling it that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, please. Come on down.
I guess you've operated many times too and uh. And considering what uh Tina was talking about. We did get a letter, actually sent uh stated now, June twenty four, of twenty twenty four. Uh from Miss Henderson. And it stated that uh. I'm sending this letter regarding parking at two hundred, usually. This neighborhood has been uh designated approximately, well designed approximately thirty years ago. We don't, we got that all established. When there was a average of two cars per home, okay? We got that established. As you all know, there can be many more cars associated with households today. Town is gotten bigger. It says Budwood has had acted homeowners association for several years, was served to enforce limitation of. Using a two space per home and utilizing the overflow parking by addition cars. Unfortunately, there's no homeowners there. We got that all established, okay? But they had a. I enforce enough parking, okay? And on that, okay, we come here talking to the town about the uh parking. And the town is, is the source of what, what we can do, okay? We hearing everything, just trying to put things together. But you have a community, you have a people. That makes that community. Where we come to the town commissioner. And we, and can we all talk together? When y'all make the decision, the people have to know.
Yep.
We don't know because we all have a voice. And all I'm asking is that, you know, hear us, what we talking about, about the parking space. We hear y'all about you saying what you're trying to do, but we have, you know, some, some suggestions too, which we trying to put together. Because I came forth before and y'all, y'all utilized about the area behind overflow parking behind the, that area. And then right there, the islands there, there's enough for overflow parking. Okay, that's for the overflow park. But you still have issues where people consider to were saying, well, their house number is, is like. I'm at two, two hundred. I have one in front, one in the back. And one that was there, when, when you talk about the parking lot, was it doesn't belong to the homeowners, but there was. Um handicap spots. There's no, no handicap spots out there for people that do have handicaps. And that was on the end where I'm at. And it should be one on the end, on the far end. And then on each, each corner should have each two handicaps. Because I noticed this one there does not notice, and then there's somebody down the end, there's a handicap, but they have to stick it in there. And then you go down, there's a handicap there. There's nothing marked. So when these places are, are unmarked, people come and just park in anywhere they wanna go. So you know, that's something that should be looked at also. Also that it was saying that uh this letter serves as a thank you to, you know, to residents who consider the parking needs. Of their neighbors, especially those who may have mobility issues. There's a lot of mobility issues out. That needs to be addressed. I've been there twenty eight years prior to what I seen come and go. Um there's renters and there's homeowners. Um, there's renters and there's homeowners. And then this letter says, if you are new. Or you're new to Budwood's neighborhood or unaware of the limited of on parking. This letter serve as a request to consider the needs. Of your neighbors. There's no respect. There's no courtesy. And I pray for my neighborhood. You know, I pray for the neighborhood that I, I live in. Because, you know, for what I, what I hear when they, when I, and what I see. I don't intervene, but if somebody comes to me, I try to direct them to the right source, which is here. To where they can. Address their issues, et cetera. Come together and in honor of one another, which is, it's not good. And I had mentioned that before, that if we don't have this resolved, there's gonna be confrontations. And we don't need that. Also, this letter says here. That, um, the city needs are being limited by limited the number of vehicles parking near your home. To two cars to utilize overflow parking areas. If you are a landlord, please advise your tenants to be the same. Nobody's been advised. This came in mail. If the landlord guy who did the renters, they should have advised their renters what this letter was addressed back in June of twenty twenty-four. So that's, that's not communication. It's lack of communication. So that's why at the last meeting, when it was, the issue was brought up. And that was considered to, you must, you know, commissioned upon her. You know, it was misunderstanding. It was lack of communication. Okay, and, and, and I didn't get involved with any of that. I just listened and directed here. Wish that. This, 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 this issue that is coming along that we have and is gonna continue. But I had seen people talking. That had the issues and trying to resolve it. And that's a good sign. But I hope and pray to the Lord that there's no confrontation and physical, that the law has to come out. But I don't wanna see that out there. But everybody, you know. But what I'm asking is that talk to the people when you make, you know, the decision so they're know and aware. And that the homes that people are owning. You know, consider, you know, that the numbers that they're asking for, one in the front, one in the back. And those that are, are handicapped, consider to know the first one or the second. I mean, the M and N. And, and that's what I'm asking.
Well, listen, I think handicap parking takes priority over anything that we do, so.
It'll be a beauty.
So there are handicaps out there and that, and, and, and I put this up, not on that this meeting, last meeting.
If you have a handicap spot right in front of your house, let's just say, and you need it because you're in a wheelchair.
No, I'm not in a wheelchair.
I know you're not. I'm, I'm pretending. What do you think would stop anybody from parking in there with a handicap on?
Getting towed or a ticket.
No, I mean, if they have a handicap, they can park.
Oh, no, that's not. Somebody else parks there.
Right. Handicap is handicap no matter where.
No matter who may it may be. A handicap can park a spot.
Right. And it'd be very hard to designate a handicap per person. Because that's where you live. It would, I can see it wouldn't work.
Okay.
I think, I, I personally think you're better off being handicapped and having your own personal spot, period. Taking, taking spots away with handicap were just gonna be issues.
No, don't take away the handicap spot. Because when, when, when it was, what I'm saying, understand here. I've been up for twenty-seven years. That handicap spot was a handicap spot. And then actually handicap spot was my spot, which was two hundred.
Is it marked handicap still?
It's not marked. It's marked, it's marked, it's marked two hundred. And then I got one in the back.
And it wasn't replaced. And the town took it over.
Yeah, when the town, when the town took it over.
I would advise it to be your place.
You know.
No, it would allow for people that need, even if they live two, three doors down, it would allow a handicap spot. And anybody can use it. I understand.
Anyway, I don't wanna get into that. I know.
Okay, I understand. But what I'm saying is.
I understand where you're coming from. It's certainly worth more discussion.
Yeah, but what I'm asking is that, you know, y'all are making progress. And the community is trying to resolve it as it says right here. Uh, on this letter here. You said that with limited parking can be greatly reduced by neighbors communicate, communicating with one another. By utilize overflow parking area. Communication is the key. You know, that's the key. It's like we communicating here with one another. And here's a communicate with the, with the community out there. And which y'all are addressing this. You know, when you get a letter, I do read and I do abide by what the, you know, what the town is, is enforcing. And I'm saying, you know, it is making some progress. But I don't wanna see, you know, no, no confrontation out there.
Does the, does the mailman deliver to a box system or do they do it right to the house?
No box. Everybody has a box.
Thank you.
And, and, and I, I feel that there's something gonna be addressed. You know, I think every neighbor, even the renters, instead of the homeowners, should be able to get whatever's going on. And they, you know, cannot be kept in the dark. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for the time and regret.
Thank you.
And, uh, you're doing a good job. Thank you, sir.
Okay, who is next? Come on down.
Mr. Bayer, Council of the. Jerry Hawkins, supposed to be, though we, I've lived there for a long time. And.
And what's your address, sir?
Five twelve Buckets. Thank you. Um, just to let you know some things, we started out with the homeowners association there. And the problem that you had is, is people didn't wanna join the homeowners association one hundred percent. You cannot force somebody to join the homeowners association. Uh, we went through that. I went through it as a past president of the civic association out there. So I'm telling you what's going on. These people don't wanna join, you can't make them join. But yet they're the first ones to turn around and say, you know, crying about this, that, you know, all right, it's a big, big deal. But, um, I had even looked at the, uh, people that, that are in town that do this. Uh, homeowners association and stuff. And for what we were charging versus what they charge. Look, we got old people out there can't afford a mortgage. You know, I'm stopping sixty-five in December and I'm still paying a mortgage. So I can't afford three, four hundred dollars a month just to have somebody come in there and tell me what you can do or can't do. Okay. I forget what it was. It's been a while. It's been a while. But anyway, getting back to the parking issue. Uh, I can tell you that over the five hundred block, we do have a real good group of people over there. So we kinda watch out for each other. And it's not parking its kids too, because people like to ride around and see who they can see out playing. Okay, I'm retired from the sheriff's office. Don't think I don't watch. Okay, so, you know, there, there's other things that go on too. But anyway, getting back to this parking deal. Um, I had heard that a letter was put out that they were gonna issue two passes per, per household. And if they didn't have a pass, then they were gonna be towed. Okay, so I don't know where that letter come from, but I'm gonna tell you right now, one was sent. They did a poor job because I didn't get. Never sent, but let's clear the air right now, so.
There has never been a letter. The only letter that was ever sent out was the one on.
Right, right. Okay, the other thing is, um, I've brought to the attention of law enforcement several times, there are cars that are parked out there. Um, number one, I, I had, I went around today, I'm not a cop. But I can get out of the car and see what's going on. I can't somebody else. Uh, we got. I got four vehicles I found today. First one is a Dodge caravan, which is parked up there, uh, when you come in the second entrance to Budwood's road.
It's been sitting up there for months, probably close to a year now.
And it's out of state. State of Maryland says if you move into this state, you will change your tag from the state you are in into state of Maryland within sixty days. Tags expire.
And the van he's speaking of belongs in the three oh five. It's the house home. Please don't tow, belongs to three oh five.
Well, that's, that's belonging. Delaware, I had Tommy Kearns, which most of you probably do remember. I was a state trooper told me one day, you know, you've got to change your tags, right? What's going on now? Not. The other thing I have is I have a black Mini Cooper over there that has North Carolina plates on it. No sticker, no expiration date on it. Put a spark there in the overflow. So here, this is where we have a problem. You're telling me you can't park in your house, but how? We can't park over there in the overflow because we don't have room. The other thing you have is you have a silver Mercedes Benz over there. Um, that has a Maryland tag. It has a twenty-four sticker. Up in the upper right hand corner of the tag, but no date of expiration. I could have put it. I'll get something like a good Maryland, a good motor vehicle system, but stole my tag. I'll just put it on there. And these, these people work state government, they ain't. And then I found today an olive four door Chevy Delaware with no registration. Tags there, but no sticker on there. I'm from Delaware. I know what this on. So, you know, if we talk about parking, let's give these people someplace to park.
Appreciate that.
You know, I mean, if you want me to give you, I'll give.
I'd love to have that.
I, I, I don't have a problem with it. Um, but you know, the thing is, if, if, if I give it or y'all do something.
Move the action.
I mean, come on, let's go. Let's not sit here and, you know, it's trying to complain. Let's be proactive here, get something done. Um, the other thing that's going on that I've noticed is that, uh, down there at that new development coming in there behind, uh, Redder's Market and all that. Uh, is that town or is that county?
You know, I mean, Redder's, uh, that's, that's town.
Okay. I noticed there was a bunch of rip rack put out there, as I call it, tire scrub. Being an ex truck driver. And the other thing you're gonna have to watch out for, and we're gonna have to have forward stops on it, some kind of stop sign put up there. I was a truck driver. I know right now they pay them by the ton. They don't pay them by the hour. If you have a truck driving that drives by the hour, they're a lot more concerned. Obedient of the roadways and everything. If you run by tonnage, you're running to make a paycheck. And if that means sixty in a forty, you do it.
Is this on two thirteen or?
No, it's right there on Whitehall Road. They got tire scrub out there already.
That's the, that's the construction by the, uh, Southfields contractor to tie in our sewer there.
That's the contractor doing that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Just to tie in the sewer.
That's where they tie into sewer there.
I mean, I noticed there's a fire hydrant back there. I'm glad to see that being with fire department. But, you know. You know, you got tire scrub back there. We're supposed to knock all that stuff off the tires and make them out. But. I'm just concerned for the old people too, because you know, we, we got an older lady that lives down there by, uh, Breeders. And, you know, she comes driving down the road every day blowing her horn and people look at her like she's full grown and simple. But it's only because she wants people to know she's gonna be backing up. I noticed that somebody busted her in the back end. Don't know why, don't know where. Okay, but I noticed it too when they parked down there in the back. Uh, black top and everything else. You know. Yeah, the, well, you know, the thing is, you gotta put, put the police out there, run a radar, wait everybody in the neighborhood that is dead. Yeah. Yeah, but. You know, then again, I'm not here to complain. I'm here to tell you what the problems are and.
Listen, we appreciate your input.
I've been there for a long time. Personally, I like PA a little bit better, but I don't know which is cheaper, Maryland or PA. Um, but anyway. And we need, we saw. I, I don't wanna have to come back and say, look, I'm upset here and I said something that don't end with thought. Cause that's when I started really getting a little upset. So.
Wanna add something about the parking. Kendall Hodges, I also live at five twelve. Um, our overflow, we have probably like seven spot overflows. And those, and the, do, we have two cars that just sit there, most on end, don't move. And we have a neighbor who also has a car there that sits there weeks on end and does not move because she works at home. Um, but that's three out of seven of our spots taken. Those get really filled up on the weekends. And it's hard to find a spot when you have three people that live at your house.
Kendall was adopted by my wife and I, so our granddaughter, she just graduated from Beaumont this past summer.
Congratulations.
And he's going to start attending the nursing program at Cecil Community College in the fall. So, you know, I kinda see where she comes from too. And I've seen some of the acrobats that run around out there after ten, eleven o'clock at night, cause they're on the fire department. And I fought too, going through retirement community up there, probably about six months ago, called the police. And they stopped. They didn't drove people. You know, what if she's walking, then coming back to class or something? I can't be there all the time. I work twelve hour shifts at the hospital.
I thought you were.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. I'm gonna retire, I believe, and my wife's just gonna, she's gonna swallow it first. I'm gonna be retired. But anyway, you know. I think that what you're talking about maybe with sticker system is probably gonna be. But the thing is that we keep the overflows out, so when she comes home from school, she can have a place to park.
Better at one.
Now, the addition. Um, I'm listening to what you're saying. Casey, I don't press. I'm not impressed with the way they laid those two overflow lots out. Where were they laid out at? Who was the one that was mostly asking for additional parking when all this started in the five hundred block? Where did they all go? Four hundred block, three hundred block. Now, you got that, you got that big piece of ground right there across from the entrance to the five hundred block. Has no water going for it. No sewer. Why did they not put something right there? I mean, there's no trees, so you don't have to worry about planting trees, cutting trees down and planting. Cheapest way to go. Yeah, I mean, I watch Casey I sometimes, you know, I'm sitting here shaking my head with some of the stuff that they do. So, you know, I, I mean, maybe we need to keep a little more of a, an, an, an eye on them too when they're in here for this stuff. So, but anyway.
Thank you.
Here's what I have right here. Bear.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Hopefully we can get something done here.
Alrighty, appreciations. I live at the five, at five fourteen, just up the, a couple houses up from Jerry. Chantel Duchesne, just. But, um. The parking on the street, I understand it's overflow for the people that live on the street. But there has to be something put on the pole with the second entrance to Budwood's, so we don't get hit. With the people parking on the road with the big truck and the boats and the campers and all that. I've almost got hit five times. One, what was it? Monday. I had just wheel wheels coming out because couldn't see what was coming. So. I'm sorry.
You're talking about Whitehall Road?
Whitehall, yeah. Yeah.
On the second entrance?
Yeah, the second entrance to Budwood's. You can't see oncoming traffic at all. Yeah, coming out. You can't see it at all. So I know we, somebody in the neighborhood had said something about putting one of those double mirrors so you can see. On the pole that's right across to where you can see what's coming down the road and not get your front end taken out, get the back end taken out. That's a problem. I, to me it is, or if anybody with a camping trailer or a boat, it doesn't need to be in the neighborhood. It doesn't need to be on the road. If you do park it across the street. Where the gravel is and where that huge. Field is, park it over there, not adjacent to the neighborhood. That's my problem. And so, second problem I have, I mean, parking, I understand it's always been like that, but as Jerry said, we're living in five hundred block. All the neighbors in the five hundred look out for each other. You know, if I'm gonna be gone for a week or two weeks on vacation, going to take care of my mother-in-law that's sick. I tell my neighbors, hey, I'm gonna be gone for two weeks. Please use my parking spot. That way you're not having to run around, especially with Kendall. Being young, she doesn't need to be parked at the top of the hill. Plain and simple, but anyway. Now, not only with the parking, I just have an issue. I live on an in-unit in five fourteen. It butts up to the storm drain. Now, I've lived there for twenty-five years. I know of only one time that any rip rock has been put in that storm drain. So I don't know what can be done to get the rip rock put into storm drain because it's nothing but tall grass. Now, I do all the milling, I do all the trimming, I take care of it all the way to the wood line. So I'm not asking for the town to come in and mail, I've told the town twenty times, guys, you don't need to move in.
Is there a grate?
No, it's just an embankment.
Okay.
And you should have rip rock.
We'll take a look at it.
Yeah, which is fine, I mean, if not, it's gonna come to the point where I'm gonna go by the rip rock myself and do it.
I, I'm.
And have it.
I'm not gonna worry what the rip rap needs to do.
Yeah, well, that's what was there when we first moved in, there's huge boulders.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Which is fine, I mean, and like I said, I do the.
Did they float away, the boulders float away?
Yeah.
The kids, the kids steal it, Mr. Mayor.
The kids steal them, the, the, the neighbors have sold them to make their own little. Um, walls for their flower gardens and stuff like that.
Okay.
So that's just, that's just, just one of them. Yeah, and you were talking about the handicap parking, my husband's a double N P D. So he's in wheelchair. So thank God where my parking spot is, it used to be a handicap parking spot. So I do have homework and pushing right up to hell.
Good, but if, if it was marked handicap, you might lose it.
Well, it hasn't been marked handicapped in twenty years.
Well.
Which is fine, I mean. But when you guys do, if you do do the parking pass or do the homeowners or whatever, which I don't agree with the homeowners, our homeowners association was a chip. The money was supposed to go for snow removal, for the homeowners association, we were supposed to have a park, we were supposed to have a pool. We were supposed to have water rights, which have been taken away from me now, apparently, but it's in my deed that I get water rights to the room. And I can't even get back to the room because it's gated off. Which I don't understand why it's gated off. But, um, yeah, when we bought our house, brand new, we had two parking spots, which I, I totally understand, families grow. I have one vehicle, I have an extra, I have an extra spot. So I told my neighbors, hey, if you need a spot for something, please use it, but don't park your car there because you live at home or you work from home. The car's got to move, that is my spot, but if you need to use it, you're more than welcome to use it, but just not stay there. Which Kendall's used it, which is fine because she comes and goes. I mean, I've had other neighbors use it, you know, I have a neighbor that has elderly, elderly parents, they use it. When their parents come over to visit. But thank you. But, yeah.
By the way, that was the first homeowners association that was out there before I took it over.
Yeah.
Very good. Yeah, I didn't know if you were part of Kensington Courts.
No.
Okay.
No.
Very good, what's that?
Our, our, our homeowners keys went to buy the president's, uh, lawn mower equipment for his, 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 um. His, his, his lawn care business.
Very good. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Come on down.
What do you mean, when they paint or tune, got a button woods? Um, I'm just gonna piggyback off of what my neighbor has said, um, parking is a mess out there. Um, the only thing I'm gonna add is I've been living out there for two years and I've never had an issue with none of my neighbors. I feel like we have all gotten along well to the point where they don't even know who we are, they don't even know my name, so. We stay to ourselves, um, I know only a few neighbors out there, I've learned a couple names over the, over the last weeks and months, but, um. Like they have said, families have grown, I know my kids have cars. And what I'm not gonna do is have my eighteen-year-old daughter walking on the main road to come around to the front of the house, I'm sorry, I'm just not doing it. We have people that will walk up to her numerous times, have not walked up to her, who actually have called, can you please come to the front door, someone's following me. So I am not, I'm sorry, I'm gonna put my daughter and my kids first when it comes to their safety. And I'm gonna be brutally honest, a parking spot means nothing to me when it comes to safety of my kids. So they either need to figure out, you have to figure out the parking somehow, but I'm not going to tolerate someone putting notes on my front door. Or on my kids' cars, telling them to move their cars or they're gonna get them removed after knowing what the rules are, so. I, like I said, I have no issues with anybody, I'm very approachable with my neighbors, I know how to communicate, I speak up. But my kids' safety is first and I'm not gonna tolerate someone threatening them. Following them, none of that, I'm, I'm just not doing it, so. We don't even have any parking spaces in front of our house, let's just start there. The day that I moved into the neighborhood, I was told, don't park in this spot, don't park in that spot, that was a welcome to the neighborhood, we'll start with that. Um, our, we're two oh four, the neighbor that lives in two oh seven was gracious enough to give me a parking spot in front of my house because I didn't have one and I had to get that. So I have his parking spot, so yes, I park in the parking spot that is not numbered two oh four.
Do you have two oh four marked anywhere?
Yes, but there, the two oh four was never mine because the day I moved in, I was told I was supposed to park in two oh three, which. Because no one was living in two oh three, so I was supposed to park in two oh three. So I was told from the very beginning that this is what the rules were and. So that's what we've been kind of going off of, but then we had neighbors move into two oh three. Then now took two oh three and two oh four and two oh one and two, two oh two, they have like four cars, so. At the end of the day, I don't complain about the parking, I really don't because at the end of the day, wherever I can park at to get into my house. If my parking spot that was given to me or granted to me, so to speak, is taken. Then I have to find another parking spot, I know that we've had a neighbor that was parked in my spot and we had a conversation and I said, it's fine. I, I'm, I'm not stressed over the parking, I get it that some people are and I respect that. But to have notes put on my car, my kid's car, I have a new driver and. He's like, kind of like, I have nowhere to park, no, I, I don't know where I'm supposed to go. The very first day, and I can, I'm sure he'll speak to this, but the very first day my son got his car, there was absolutely no parking at all. He parked like on the side ramp. And my dad called me and said, he has to move his car, he cannot park there. And I'm like, well, where is he supposed to park? And so, we parked it around the back, which I get, but he still can't get in the house from the back sliding door, so he has to walk around the house. So it's kind of, you know, and I get it, it's gonna be an inconvenience for everybody at some point, but again, we didn't even have a parking spot. We didn't have an overflow and then like Mr. Wilmond said, I don't want to get it to the point where, and I'm not confrontational, I'm not gonna argue with anybody over a parking spot, I'm just not. But what I will do is defend my family, that if someone says something to my children, I'm gonna speak up on that behalf. And I know there was an altercation with my child who was visiting, who was actually bringing stuff in the house because she was moving out. And was called out of her name and in return, she started going, they started going back with the neighbor. And so then be, became the victim and she became the aggressor, my daughter, I'm not playing that, I don't. My daughter moved her cone, I'm, I'm okay with saying that, my daughter moved her cone, she told her she's gonna be there for a few minutes. I don't care, move your car, you don't get to talk to people like that and expect that you get what you want, plain and simple. There's a way that you speak, especially to someone who's. I'm gonna be honest, she's not a proactive type, she's going to respond in a negative way, if you come at her, she feels like she's being threatened, she's going to respond that way. And so instead of you coming to her a different way, this is the response that you get. And so now, we look like we're the aggressors of the neighborhood, which is not the case. And so, you know, like I, and I, you know, I told him to speak up. This means, you know, I'm sorry, I already almost died. Tina, I told Tina, my door is two oh four, I'm approachable, come have a conversation with me, I love to know my neighbors. But this is not how I want to know my neighbors, it's from an altercation over parking. I've never had that happen, I've gotten along with neighbors everywhere I've lived and I'm the type, we bring people together, we don't, I'm not, I don't want to be divisive over parking spots. So whatever you guys can do, I'm okay with the two parking spots. You know, and I've told my kids, you know, we all probably have some type of teenager at some point in time that do what they want to do and don't want to listen. I have said it, so I promise you guys, I have told them, don't park in an English parking spot. But when I go to sleep and it's eleven thirty, twelve o'clock when they come in. I can't help that, so it's something that needs to be done, but at the end of the day, like I said. I'm gonna protect my kids over anybody and anything over a parking spot, I don't really care about a parking spot. When it comes to my kids walking all down around the corner to get to an overflow, when you have two overflow spots for fifteen houses, that's just, it doesn't make any sense. Because it's like fifteen and then two spots, right, that's two overflow spots. So then you got people kind of fighting over overflow because you got more than two parts, so.
I think three years ago, we didn't even have, is, no overflow spots.
Yeah, so, I mean, like I said, families are growing, kids are getting older, kids are driving. They have to have somewhere to park too, they live there just as much as the adults, so I'm. You know, and like I said, I don't mind any altercation with, with neighbors, but at the same time, I also. Don't feel like you need to be putting notes on my cars to say, move your car, I'm getting it, so, because you're not, it's just. There's, you know, it's like aggressive energy for no reason, just come knock on my door if you feel like I need to move, even though I don't feel like you need to do that either. But we, we drive B S three as a partner.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, on one other, those two, we're having a lot of homeless people that's walking up and down that road and camping back there in those woods.
Oh, yeah.
We had homeless that were camping back there behind the, uh, Reeder's property. Um, so these are the ones, it's not the neighborhood kids, it's the homeless that's running around here. And the one is the one that sits over there taking up collection by Redners, who was told to sit in the street.
Yeah.
They didn't want her on the sidewalk.
But she lives at Rock. She lives at Rock.
But if you see homeless walking in and out of an area and you, I mean, we'd appreciate a phone call.
Let us know, okay, we'll take a look at it. Okay, anyone else have anything to say tonight?
Question you forgot to ask when I was on the phone, I'll do it soon. When they originally did the parking, they made spots that say no parking like by the curbs and by when you're first coming in, because if you're not careful, you'll get hit when you come in. Is that still a no parking zone where they can be towed?
I, I can't answer, I don't know exactly where it's at, I, I'll, we'll go out and take a look at it.
Yeah, when you first come in.
Is it marked with the yellow line?
Yeah, it's the diagonal lines that says no park, well, people park there.
And what's it near?
Uh, when, when you first come into Button Woods, both entrances to Button Woods, and when you're coming in, I know with the five hundred block. When you come around right by the curb, you have your cars parked here, parked here, and then it's like a dog bone, there's a no parking right down at the bottom. Where right in front of Jerry, it says no parking there, because if you back up, you're gonna T-bone.
Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
I, I will personally go out there and take a look at it.
If you have any questions, I'm at five fourteen.
Thank you. We're gonna put the full court press on and everyone's gonna be pissed off that the full court press is getting ready to happen. Okay, anyone else on the big screen have anything to say tonight?
I'm asking to unmute and I'm getting no, uh.
Uh, maybe I'm late when I asked her. Alyssa, come on down. I know we have Friday night, we have a big event.
Well, we do, but, um, if we're watching the weather, it's probably not gonna happen.
Okay.
Um, we'll make that call first thing in the morning, but Fall Fest is in five weeks. And I want to open up an invitation to the management members to have a booth represented, E P B will be there, Sangoli will be there. And we would love to have, uh, management carries, whether you're coming in for an hour or coming back and forth and sharing the spot, but we would love to have a conference.
Very good, I think we should. Alright, thank you. Very good. I'm gonna act like the mayor right now.
First of all, I thank everybody for coming and giving your input on parking. Um, I can assure you that we're gonna try to do everything we can to try to resolve some of the issues, hopefully all of them. Um, I know Mayor has already been taking notes, but, um, myself, I, I don't live out there and I apologize very much, I'm doing anything, I just wanted to help. That's it.
Alright, meetings adjourned.